Good morning and how many the Committee on General Government Operations appropriation. Housing is now called to order. Time now is nine oh seven. Welcome to everyone connected by Zoom and those to the India television or the YouTube channel. Thank you for your patience for coming in the Zoom platform while we maintain social distancing mandates. Notice of this public hearing were disseminated via email to all centers, all main media broadcasting offices on Thursday, February ten, and then again on Tuesday, February fifteen, and today is Thursday, February seventeen. The agenda this morning is Bill one ninety-seven dash thirty-six introduced by myself, co-sponsored by Senator Amanda Shelton, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Senator Jose Pito Terlai, Senator Frank Boss, Senator Jim Moynihan, Senator Clinton Joe, and Senator Talina Cruz Nelson, an act appropriate ten million dollars from the two thousand and twenty-one earning income tax credit reimbursement to the University of Guam for the purpose of providing additional financial support toward the construction of the Student Service Center and the School of Engineering buildings. The rules of conduct for this hearing is this Zoom meeting is hosted by my staff. I will mute all Zoom participants until called upon. The members of the committee and or noncommittee members will be allowed to pose a question to an individual testifying. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by me before speaking and begin by stating their names for record keeping purposes. When called to speak, please ensure that you are unmuted. Question testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of any sentence or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violation of the general rule of conduct will result in removal from the virtual public hearing. Please ensure your video remains on throughout the hearing. Participants must be visible at all times and not engage in any activity during the hearing. Failure to maintain invisibility may cause your removal from the meeting livestream. But if you know you're having a cup of coffee or a drink or a little snack, I would have no problem with that. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues for attending this morning's hearing. We have the Oversight Chair Senator Amanda Shelton. We have Senator Jim Moynihan, and we have Senator Joan Brown. Thank you for joining. We also have in the audience, we have Dr. Christ, President of University of Guam. We have Dr. Anita Enriquez. Enriquez, the Vice President of University of Guam. We have we have the Vice President of Finance, University of Guam, Senator Randy Wigan. And we have one board region Lisa Provedo. Okay, I'm so far, I think I covered everybody. And then now we'll we'll move on with the bill. Number one, this is we're rehearing this bill. And the reason for that is the committee has identified that amendments must be made to reflect the additional the addition of lines to read, add or general fund balances of the revenue collected in excess of the adopted fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one revenues, and to properly cite the law that identifies the earning income tax credit section seventy-five three zero B of chapter seventy-seven, General Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six, and section ninety-six twenty-five A of the U.S. Public Law one one seven dash two under the American Rescue Plan. And then this second hearing will ensure that the amendments are properly vetted and germane to the bill. And with that, I'd ask for, I'll begin with Dr. Christ. Do you have any testimony you'd like to present, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Senators. Thank you very much for helping us in this way. So I'll submit this as written testimony, but I thought I would reiterate it here as well. So the University of Guam is really grateful for the support we've we have been given in the form of Bill number one ninety-seven dash thirty-six. We remain in support of this bill and any efforts to help the university cover the funding shortfall caused by the sudden increases in the cost of construction materials. As you know, the university has been working for more than a decade to construct the new Student Success Center and the Engineering Annex to house the university's new School of Engineering. In April of last year, we received approval from the United States Department of Agriculture for the negotiated terms of a loan in the amount of twenty-one point seven million dollars. We reached out to the contractor for the Student Success Center to resume contract negotiations. They indicated that their costs had increased significantly as a result of material shortages in the country. Based on their cost estimate, we revised the estimate for the Engineering Annex and in addition to the Student Success Center as follows. The price for the Student Success Center is twenty-two point nine million, and the Engineering Annex is seven point nine million. The total cost now is thirty point eight million. And if you subtract the USDA loan of twenty-one point seven million, you're left with a shortfall of nine point one million. We realized the predicament we were in when we did realize that. We started talking to the governor, the lieutenant governor, some senators, and anyone who would listen to try to find a solution to the shortfalls. We are grateful for the response we received. The governor started working on a potential solution, and Senators San Augustine and Shelton proposed Bill one ninety-seven dash thirty-six. The university advised the governor, we would try to free up two million dollars of CARES Act funds for the purpose of using them for the shortfall. That reduced the shortfall to seven point one million. However, in the intervening time, costs have continued to increase, as you all know. And also, the shortfall does not take into account any construction management costs or contingencies. The USDA is insisting that we incorporate contingencies now into this budget planning. And all that is to say that the ten million dollar figure reflected in the bill could probably all be utilized to ensure these two buildings are constructed in the proper manner. As you are aware, our first class of graduates of the School of Engineering has graduated, and the current Student Center remains at the end of its useful life and needs to be replaced. We are eager to get these projects moving as soon as we can resolve all of these funding issues, and we would have many thousands of students and UOG personnel and alumni grateful for your support. See to it's possible.
All right, thank you, Dr. Christ. I'd ask the Chairwoman of the Board of Regents, Ms. Lisa. I know you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, thank you. To the Honorable Senator Joe San Augustine, members of the Committee on General Government Operations Appropriation and Housing, Senator Shelton, Senator Moynihan, Senator Brown, tight degree, Senator Ada. The Student Success Center is long overdue and will no doubt transform campus life with new energy. Much like when the museum was built in Skinner Plaza recently, it created a sense of place for downtown Agatea where families can spend time together, enjoy holiday events, or grab a meal from any food truck. The Student Success Center will certainly have this kind of impact on the university campus as it encloses the outdoor lawn to form a gathering place for all Tritons. And it becomes a stage for Charter and Founding Day events, school ceremonies, student engagement, alumni fundraisers, especially in the post-COVID world where outdoor venues are increasing in need as the new norm. The School of Engineering is recently graduated, first class in the Funda Chana semester, and building the School of Engineering will bring the engineering program that much closer to ABD accreditation, which is the acronym for Accreditation Board for Engineering and Technology, the gold standard for licensure. With this professional accreditation, ABD degree candidates will be able to obtain reciprocity to practice in other states, qualified to take the examination with a four-year experience as compared to eight years for non-ABD candidates. The engineering community will be celebrating February twenty to the twenty-eighth. It's Engineers, Architects, and Land Surveyors Week, and there is high hopes that a new generation of professional engineers, educated, trained, and licensed in Guam will bring fresh talent to the building industry and engineering workforce. So hopefully, too, Bill one ninety-seven dash thirty-six will be fully funded to make these proposed projects a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Enriquez or Randy, would you like to speak other than I know Randy's like, I'm good. Okay, how about you, Dr. Enriquez? Do you want to speak? And they're pretty much going to echo what the President and Chairwoman said.
Yes, Manana Sajus and Sajus Masi, Mr. Chairman, Honorable Senators. I texted the President and I told him I'm here for moral support, but I just want to add the Guam Legislature has always been a great supporter of the endeavors of the institution, the University of Guam. And I recall when I was Dean of the Former College of Business and Public Administration, we had the USDA loan application, but it was through the the great support of our senators then and the Guam Legislature that we were able to come up with a way to help with the annual debt service using a very creative model. The USDA loan application this time around, it spanned for much, 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 much longer than we thought. But again, we turn to you for your support to help to, you know, allow us this opportunity to to finally get a safe space for our students. Just to give you a little bit of the reality, we're grateful to be able to graduate our first set of Bachelor of Science and Civil Engineering students. But you can imagine they were doing so during, you know, the last two years during this global pandemic. But you can imagine the lab spaces are somehow housed in the the structures within Dean's Circle, not conducive for practical labs. And so that's still their reality at this moment. We did a sort of a symbolic, not a groundbreaking, but sort of a prelude to a groundbreaking for the school in engineering some years ago. And we're hoping as we proceed with the ABD accreditation process that we will have that facility, that will have that, the appropriate classrooms and lab spaces for that. As far as the Student Success Center goes, you all remember the old Student Center that still exists. We've had crumbling concrete. We've had, I won't go into details of the other other mishaps, but that used to be the destination for the cafeteria. We no longer serve food in there. We have our counselors and other key student support service members spread out throughout the campus. We just, you know, we just don't have the adequate space. But I like to think about these two structures as investments, public investments. And of course, the Students Success Center, we had to reduce the footprint of what the actual structure will look like just to make it more affordable. And so we turn to you, we're this close, we're this close. We greatly appreciate the support through this bill, Mr. Chairman, and Honorable Chair of our Higher Ed Oversight Committee, Senator Shelton and members of the Guam Legislature. We very much appreciate your support and look forward to a favorable outcome for this particular bill. Sajus Masi.
Thank you, Dr. Enriquez. Yes, I was there during the, I guess, the groundbreaking for the engineering building. And for many of you, probably weren't even going to school yet. I was there in seventy-five when the Student Center was there in the library. So I'm quite aware of, I'm a alumni of UOG, so I've been watching out for trying to find, figure out a way how to take care of University of Guam. We need to do as much as we can. It's all about our students and the people who are. I will now ask Senator Shelton, the Oversight Chair, on our education. Do you have any comments or any questions to the panel that have spoken? I'd like to also recognize Senator Tony Ada that have joined us and Senator Chris Duennas. Thank you.
Sajus Masi, Mr. Chair, and thank you to everyone from the University of Guam for being here again for this second hearing on this bill. We know that it's much needed, and we're looking forward to its passage, hopefully, very soon. And you're right, as was mentioned, this has been a big collaboration between the Guam Legislature, the administration, and the University of Guam to figure out a solution that works best for everyone. And we know that now we have an alternate funding source that is proposed by the Chairman of the Office of Finance and Budget. So we're very grateful for you, Mr. Chair, for your collaboration and your diligence to ensure that we have, we have the money to support the University of Guam and to support our students there. As you said, the Student Center has been a long time coming. I was there when they were, they were talking about breaking it down already during my first year at the university. And to see it finally inching closer, I think, for our future students is a very exciting thing that we we are all happy to support, to see better facilities that that's that will enhance the experience for students at the University of Guam. So thank you very much to everyone here, and we look forward to this bill moving forward expeditiously, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. Senator Jim Moynihan, would you like to make any comments or questions to the panel that are present?
I'm totally in favor of the bill there, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for, and I'm glad I'm a co-sponsor in this as alumni, right? We want to make our university the best it could be. Maybe I'm going to miss the old Student Center and eating in the cafeteria there with a Boston's fried chicken for breakfast. That was good times back then, and washing your hands with soap made at the at the science lab back then, too. So some some fond memories, but I'm sure our new students would have even greater memories as they move forward in their education. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Moynihan. Senator Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I certainly, you know, I was attended the last public hearing on this bill, and I don't know what has transpired that has changed. I mean, I'm an advocate for the university. I'm a product of the University of Guam. I've taught at the University of Guam. I've worked at the University of Guam. But I want to make sure that we're not, we're not appropriating a source of funding that's not a legitimate source of funding. I brought that up last time. And even if it was the earned income tax credit, we are very quickly expanding the source of earned income tax credit revenue. Of course, as you know, in the budget bill, we put money aside for the new hospital. We put money aside for the construction of the new Department of Corrections. And we have many, 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 many bills that many colleagues have introduced to use this as a source of funding. If we're looking at excess revenues, if I recall during the budget discussions last year, those funds were being put aside to pay the tax, the tax refunds to our community. So I don't know what has changed. I mean, I want to make sure, I mean, it's all wonderful. Let's pat ourselves on the back here. I don't think anyone's going to argue about the need to upgrade and improve and certainly expand the capacity of the university. But, you know, is this real money? And I really don't know that this is real money. And I think until I have a sense that it's real money, I'm not going to sit here and say, yes, this is, I'm all for it, and let me co-sponsor this bill and let me vote for it. I want to deal with the realities of funding because, you know, you've got paper money and you've got legislation that tries to create money. But you know what? Unless you actually have it in the bank and it's there and it's tangible, I don't want to create false hope so that we can be the heroes of this project and compliment ourselves of how wonderful we are in providing the funding. So I don't know what has changed, Mr. Chair, in terms of the source of funding because last time I checked, I thought we wrapped that all up with regards to the budget appropriations. Has anything changed that we're not aware of? Mr. Chair?
Anything change? Well, what we're, as I mentioned earlier, we made the appropriate amendments. So it's germane and it's been vetted, and we're identifying the, if there's any unappropriate funds from two thousand and twenty-one. And as we're moving along towards the budget, we're going to identify the other means of funding this. And we'll also identify the possible access of ARP funds from the governor to help.
I'd just like to have a clean appropriation to know that when we are appropriating money, it's tangible, it's real. You know, we're not, we're not playing the shell game in terms of providing funding. So I'm just going to bring that up again. If I don't vote for this bill, it's going to be for that reason. You know, legislators, we have a tendency to want to create the world wonderful, and we want to take credit for it. We want you to pat us on the back and congratulate us for it. But if it's not real money, it's not tangible money, it's not money you can access immediately to address the concerns that you, what you need them for. No one's going to argue the need of the Student Center. That was built back in the early seventies. I remember going there for graduation of my cousin, you know, when it still had gravel for a parking lot. So I recognize the need for the upgrades to the facility and certainly have seen the upgrades to the facility since I was a student many years ago there. But again, I'm just going to, I'm going to throw this out as I do with every appropriation that's related to earned income tax credit or appropriations related to excess revenue because we were very, very meticulous in wanting to ensure that any excess revenue, so that we'd have misspending by the administration, would go to tax refunds. And I don't like the idea of pitting our community against each other with regards to, do we pay tax refunds? Do we fund the university? Do we fund all these other things that our colleagues hear? Because I don't have a single bill that appropriates a penny from earned income tax credit for anything. But I have many colleagues here who put that forth. And when you add them all up, they far exceed what we recognize as what otherwise would be the amount for the earned income tax credit on an annual basis. So I simply put that out there because I want to make sure that when the university can move forward in building these buildings, that they have the ability to do that. With that, I would like to ask President Christ, in the event that this money is not available or not available in a timely fashion to meet your schedule for the construction of these facilities, what alternative is available to the universities? Does it mean one building gets built and the other one does not? What is the contingency plan in the event these funds are not readily available for you to access?
Thank you for that question, Senator Brown. The the problem is that the USDA has required us to yoke these two projects together from the beginning. And so we're stuck with, we can't begin either one of them unless we're prepared and we can cover both of them. So that's the real issue. I think Randy might have a little more detail on that. But that's the key problem is that we need to do that. And we're, as I said in my testimony, we're pursuing every possible source to try to cover this. So Randy?
Well, I also just want to ask before Randy comments. I mean, it was mentioned, is the governor going to provide ARP funding as an alternative? I mean, again, I just want to make sure it's tangible money. You know, that's it's from coming from a good source so that you guys can proceed. Is that an option that's being actively pursued? And if so, is it to the amount that you need to offset the difference with regards to the USDA loan that you guys are pursuing?
I think Randy can be specific.
Okay, appreciate it.
Yeah, actually, so we we have been working with the governor. We thought we had a source that was that was lined up, and I'm not sure that that source is is gone. But yeah, we, what we've been hearing is that there is some ARP type money that that could be available for this. And so that, you know, that might be enough to get us close enough where we could, we could get this started. And I was just going to add on the the USDA side that we we applied for this as two separate projects. And if if we, if we decide we're only going to do one, then we have to do a new application process. And that was, that was a very difficult, time-consuming process to go through. So we're, yeah, our options are are limited, and we're, you know, we're we're looking for help anywhere we can, we can get it.
Well, and totally understandable. I mean, from the, from from your perspective, totally understandable, the the desire to want to get the additional funds because you don't want to risk all the work and effort that has been put in place to get you to, you know, to where you are today, and you're that much closer. In the event things don't move through at this time, is the option to also go back and simply separate these projects and prioritize one over the other if you need to, to get started? And if so, which project, have you guys discussed which project is the most needed by the university? Would you prioritize?
Yeah, I mean, that's really hard because they're both really, really needed. I suppose that the, there's more pressure on us to get the engineering building than there is for the the Student Center. But yeah, they're both, they're both direly needed projects.
And if we, the only way to divide them into separate projects is to begin the process again. What year did we begin this process?
It was over a decade ago.
So we don't, I mean, we're in serious difficulty if we can't get the engineering facility going because we were graduating students from the engineering school. We're on track to the accreditation, and the creditors won't be thrilled if we don't have, you know, this project that, you know, we thought would be well, maybe even finished by now, well underway. So it's it's very important. And it's unfortunately that they've been yoked together this way. But that's been one of our challenges all the way through.
Well, I appreciate it again, like I said. I mean, if it was a tangible source of funding and our colleagues were truly honest with themselves of knowing that, you know, when they do carve out ten million dollars, there are many other appropriation requests they put forth. I mean, I think we go into session tomorrow, we're probably going to see some of these bills. I just want to make sure it's real. I want to make sure it's tangible. I want to make sure it's money that you can access to do what you need to do. And we're not running circles around each other or running the university around circles because it's not money that's readily available. And I have yet to hear, I didn't hear it when we had the budget discussions last year. I haven't heard it since. Where is this earned income tax credit money? Is it something readily accessible for the legislature to appropriate? If it was, then, you know, if we're going to make the decision that we're going to give the ten million to the university, and we're going to unfund all these other things that we're proposing to do, then fine. Let's make a grown-up decision and do that. But again, I'm not comfortable when I don't have answers to those questions at this point. And I don't want to make an empty appropriation to the University of Guam. You guys do tremendous work there. So much of who I am and what I do is a credit to my time at UOG and to many of the students that you've graduated from the facility and all those yet to come. I want to see the university have a bigger footprint, not just in the region, but worldwide to be a destination to come and and be proud of. I'm very proud of my undergraduate degree from UOG, and I'm very supportive of it. But I also want to make sure that when the legislature makes appropriation, it's a clean appropriation. The money's there, and we're not running you guys in circles. You can get it, what you need to do, what you need to do, and get these, get these facilities constructed. So other than that, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to provide comments and also be able to ask questions on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. So noted your your comments and your statements. Thank you, Senator Tony Ada, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I'd like to see this, this project move forward with the School of Engineering and also the Student Center. You know, my my son had to go off island to get his engineering degree. And, you know, knowing that we're able to train and educate our kids here in engineering is a great, is a great accomplishment. I hope, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to work with you. And, you know, my colleague had some concerns, and I'd like to work with you to ensure that, you know, we find the funding source that if this is not it, we'll find it somewhere. But we need to get these projects moving, and we need to get the university, their Student Center and the School of Engineering. So I hope that anything that we can do, that we will do to ensure that this project moves forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Ada, and you're also part of the committee. So I know we're going to be working together very closely on this one. Senator Duennas, do you have any questions or comments?
Sajus Masi, Mr. Chairman, and yeah, once again, I join my colleagues and, you know, yourself to really understand the true value of this project. I I think that there have been, you know, a balance of discussion this morning in terms of, you know, making sure that 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 we do what's right and correct in terms of ensuring, you know, the funding source. I I look forward to the committee, the whole, Mr. Chairman, and I think that we're going to have that anyways on a on a couple of bills that we have in this pending session. So at some point, I believe we're going to, we're going to work this out and and ensure, you know, what we need to ensure. And so, you know, for the folks at the university, as this, as this bill makes it through the process, you know, I'm sure you will be keeping an eye on the progress. And like I said, you know, maybe just stay tuned as well to this upcoming session because I think that this funding source as a whole, as it is, is, you know, kind of allocated, if you will, through the bills that have been introduced, you know, you know, looking at the similar or same pot of money. So I think we'll have more answers for you as the days go by, and I look forward to that, Mr. Chairman. This should be a very productive session. And so, once again, I join my colleagues. This is absolutely has to be a priority for our community. I mean, we we just, it's something we need, and it's something that that is going to continue to give back to our island in in a great way with with the type of skill sets that we're cultivating. And hopefully, these individuals continue to stay on Guam and even as the region develops. We know that the University of Guam is a regional institution, and many of our neighboring islands are going to, over time, start to, you know, grow their economies and and have a deep requirement for this type of service and and engineering. It's such a needed specialty. So, Mr. Chairman, I look forward to working with you and all of our colleagues to come to the, to the, you know, resolution on the funding. And but this is definitely a worthy project, and I look forward to seeing it through. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Sajus Masi.
Thank you, Senator Duennas. Senator Tello, do you have any questions or comments you'd like to make?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think, you know, there's no doubt that we all support the University of Guam at the legislature. And I think, you know, there's no doubt that we all support the University of Guam at the legislature. Dr. Enriquez mentioned that earlier, and I thank you for recognizing that because the legislature does as much as it can, but there has to be a balance and and a reality check. You know, even though this money is real, you know, we have, we have to think of the future, too. I mean, it's not going to be raining, you know, federal funds anytime soon again, and we have to adjust to that. I I know that excess revenue still needs to be assessed by the Office of Public Accountability on really the true amount of excess revenue, as well as EITC. We have yet to even hear from the federal government if that's going to be placed in a lockbox to make those payments strictly for, and it should be strictly for what it's meant to be in that earned income tax credit. Our funding, I think, is your best bet. I mean, continue to knock on the governor's door because that's a true reality of money that's there. And if there's anything to fight for, the University of Guam to do is, you know, take your picket signs and start, you know, walking up the up and down Adalou, asking for this funding because I know it's important to the university. However, the, it mentioned that it was a decade of, of, you know, work or trying to get this approved. And I don't know what the delay was that it took that long for for this to go through. I really don't think it's going to take that long if you have to separate the projects between the Student Center or the Engineering Center. I don't think there's, there's, it's going to take that long. But a lot of the comments that were said by, you know, my colleagues, especially Senator Brown, because we have the same perspective when it comes to being financially responsible and most especially transparent. I think those concerns are, you know, needs to be really looked at thoroughly and and taken more to heart, you know, of the reality to this. Now, I'm not sure, Mr. Chair, if a fiscal note was was read. I did come in a little late. I'm sorry, Dr. Christ, I missed your opening remarks. He said a funeral, and but were you able to read the fiscal note, Mr. Chair, into the record?
Senator Tello, the fiscal note was ready, been posted. All we did was make the appropriate amendments on the bill. That's why we did a secondary. Nothing has changed.
Okay, so the fiscal note, the fiscal note basically is another fiscal note because of the changes to this bill, correct? So another fiscal note was was issued?
No, no, another fiscal note has not been issued, but nothing has changed, other than the amendments, identifying the other source of funding. So I'll be requesting an updated before we report it out.
Yeah, I think that would be very helpful, Mr. Chair. And and because we want to know what the administration has, have they done in the past in other fiscal notes? They've actually felt out what they feel they're going to be paying, you know, out first. So I think because of the bill being changed, it should require a second fiscal note that we can review. So I thank you for that opportunity and staying on top of that, Mr. Chair, I appreciate it. And to all those that are here, you know, viva UOG. And we'll do the best we can to make it a reality with real money. Okay, take care. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Senator Tello, and for the, and for the folks listening and for the University of Guam. I don't hear bills unless there's, there's a very strong belief of real money. Money is money. There's no such thing as fake money. But but we're going to move along, and my colleagues, we know we're going to be working in the committee of the whole or even in the committee of appropriation discussing funding. And university is in the forefront. No doubt about that, that we're going to watch out for UOG, and we're going to take care of the students at the University of Guam. And with that said, there was no, there's no one else to testify. If there are anyone that would like to invite testimony, we'll continue to receive them. And please submit the testimonies to the mailroom of the Guam HR to email at Senator Joe S. and Austin at gmail dot com. And again, I want to thank everyone for attending this virtual public hearing and for providing feedback and suggestions. This public hearing is now adjourned. It is now nine forty one. And Sajus Massey for attendance, and for the people of Guam, we will continue at one thirty this afternoon with two bills to be addressed, Bill two forty seven dash thirty six COR. And that's the Senator Moylan's bill, which is an act to amend section five three one oh one D and five three one oh two of chapter fifty three, title eleven, Guam Code annotated, and to add a new section five three one oh nine to chapter fifty three, title eleven, Guam Code annotated, relative to transferring, transferring the authority of the Guam Able Service Savings Program from the Department of Revenue and Taxation, the Department Administration, and to authorize the government to identify and transfer up to two hundred and fifty thousand from the general fund to implement the program. And also, the bill following would be Bill two two zero dash thirty six Allison Hughes by Senator Amanda Shelton, and act to add a new section twenty six two one seven to Article two of chapter twenty six, title eleven, and to add a new subsection G to thirteen one oh one of Article thirteen point one, chapter one, title five, all of Guam Code annotated, relative to funding the compensation adjudication claims of the greatest generation of Guam for the atrocities suffered during the World War Two occupation of Guam. And thank you all for attending this hearing, and please drive safe and heat safe. Mask up, watch your distance, wash your hands. Please take care. Thank you.
Thank you all for the support.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Viva UOG.
Viva.
Viva.